I'll call the meeting of the ARPA committee to order. We've got five here tonight and then the entire board of selectmen.
So thank you.
Four, five with Kristen?
Nope, five with Kristen.
You're gonna count?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, sir.
Well, we very much like Jennifer.
She's better than good.
She's in front.
Oh, okay. We're talking about basket.
She does a lot of work.
She acts. She does all the work.
She's an honorary member.
But I do want to start with happy news, and that is we do have a new member of our ARPA committee family. Casey Anne gave birth last night at 10:49 to Audrey Ruth. Her mother and daughter are well. I question her priorities in the fact that she's not with us today. We'll do the best we can to. But anyway, congratulations to Casey and to the entire Anne family for that. I know people just received the minutes from July 26th, so I am not going to ask for an approval of those at today's meeting. We'll wait until we get together on the second Tuesday of September and we'll do both the minutes from today as well as the minutes from 26th at that meeting. I have no, old business going directly to new business. And so what I thought after taking a quick look at the applications, the number at that point, it was the number of applications that we had received. I thought it would be helpful to just bring the committee together to talk about what we're seeing and a general sense of what looks good, what are we concerned about, what do we need more information on? And then that will help us as we then for the next three weeks are in a position of taking a look at the applications that go into the Dropbox before our meeting on September 13th. So we won't all be on the same page, but at least we'll know what pages everybody has. And so we can kind of take it from there. So I've got a few general comments, but before I dominate, I'd be happy to hear other people's opinions about what we have seen in the way of applications up to this point. Kristen, go ahead.
Sure. You know, this might be one of the flaws in our application process, but like, for instance, the name of the company isn't on the applicant. It says, it says like the applicant contact, but is there a place where it actually says? Because sometimes I was looking for the name of the actual business. So maybe, maybe some people didn't put it and that's where I got confused. So just to throw that out there. And then I did notice like, um, there was one business that, like Variety Video. I started looking, I looked at their first three and then four and five, and I was just like, I don't, I don't think that those were, those were COVID-19 related.
Right, right, right. No, I think that's, that's one of my general comments as well is that I think one of the things that we had been talking about was there's kind of the first gateway is impact of COVID. And so those things that haven't, you know, where there hasn't been an impact of COVID. Understand it's a problem. We understand the business may be looking for funding, but that, but the ARPA funds are not the, are not the place to go for that. But could you see our screen, Kristen?
Yeah, and there were, there's a couple of things there that I did not see, like the, that were populated on date 23 today. Like the Rotary Club 501.
Yeah, I just added Rotary Club.
Those that showed up today. But for the rest of them, I mean, we've, doesn't, doesn't that give you enough information about who the, who the applicant is?
Yes, no, but I'm saying when you open a Variety Video, I don't know in there, there's nowhere, and maybe I'm wrong, but maybe I missed it. But when you open Variety Video, it doesn't actually say, I didn't see where it said Variety Video. I had to go back, I mean, I saw that it said it here, but I didn't see that it said it in the application. So is that right?
I didn't see it specifically on the application. I saw the business owner's name.
Yeah.
But I didn't see that, and I saw the address.
Yeah, okay. So I thought I was like, I'm like.
Yeah, you're not crazy.
All right, I was like, did I, oh, yeah. Maybe that one brought it to my attention because there's, I'm like, wait a minute.
On the applicant page, there is a second part, not at the top, where it says applicant slash organization. And I was trying to show that for one of them, but.
Okay, if I, I'm pulling it up right now.
She needed to put in her name and that goes to the company.
Exactly. That, that's exactly.
Yeah, right. It says applicant organization, doesn't have a name there, doesn't have their social security number, their business ID number, anything like that. So that one like threw me off, but regardless, that's, I don't think of their COVID-related requests.
I think what happened, what happened there is she filled out the information on the first one, on the number one of eight, and just kind of the rest of them. She was just letting you know that those were other applications, but under the same, the same grouping.
But we would look at them as individuals.
They were submitted as individuals, right?
Because one could argue that a few of those would be COVID-related with lack of business and not able to have the cash flow to do something.
Yeah, but.
And my argument would be some of the other requests, I would go to the property owner. And, and since I think it would be responsibility of the property owner, not, not the business itself.
Okay, other general comments that people want, want to make?
Specifically about these or can we talk process?
In reading, in reading through these, kind of where are there, you know, kind of what I would call either policy issues that jumped up, global issues that jumped up versus the, you know, we, we can go back and we can look at each of the individual applications and we, I think we ought to do that before we go home tonight. But I think what, what I just wanted to do is to say, when you stand back and say, okay, of these 12 or whatever that we've read, what are, what are we thinking at this point?
I think there are a few that, you know, they could use some of the money like First Church of Christ. They've asked for this quite a while ago for reimbursement of air flyers and they still.
Directly related to.
Which is directly related. I, I was interested at the Maple Court issue, which is right next to the First Church of Christ, because I think we're having groundwater issues. And with all these houses on that street with the well water and with the new testing that people have to do for plastics in groundwater now. I think that would be a health-related issue ongoing. And I think that's definitely part of the ARPA final rule.
See, I read that thinking like, you know, those are individual property owners that, you know, have wells that they can't maintain. I mean, there's probably other people around town, you know, that are in similar situations. So why just these five?
I think they were applying under the rule that allows for like water main infrastructure. I think that that's what, what they were trying to target.
All right, of the four different areas. One, one is water sewer and broadband. And so they were coming in under number four in that regard.
Yeah.
But I think that's a different point. I think that what Kristen is saying, I'll put words in your mouth for a second, is there are probably a number of households throughout Old Sable that would love to have moved from water to, you know, Connecticut Water and if somebody would pay for the hookup. And so why, why this group versus anybody else?
No, I agree. At that point, I was thinking maybe we create a slot where we put money in to start that program for our community at large. Because there will be more households that will have to answer that question, how do we pay for water main to go down the street?
Right, right.
Yeah, so maybe that's something similar to like what they did with all the beach communities, giving a grant or something for, to, to replace your septic systems. So it's like, okay, anybody that wants to hook up to city water can get up to $1,500 or something like that.
Right.
But if we, if we just give it to this one group, it opens the can of worms for other groups and then we could be out of all of our ARPA money. Just give, if you give two for one, you gotta do for all, and then we're out of money.
Hi, thanks. So yes and no. This, there's very few areas in town that have a public water main going by them and they're not connected to it. And this group of homeowners came to me like five years ago and they've been looking to get this done. And what I said to them is, hey, you know what? If you guys could come up with some money, maybe the town comes up with some money and maybe there's some ARPA money underwater infrastructure. I did not review the application. I don't know if they're asking for the entirety of the funds to come from ARPA. But there's probably a, a different way to fund it. I don't know that it's a slippery slope because I don't know, I, I shouldn't say that. There probably are other areas of town that are in this predicament. I know these folks just don't have room on their property for septic and well water. And there is public water, you know, right on Route 154 Main Street. So they were, they put together, go ahead, Kristen.
No, I was just gonna say, the applicant information, there's no, it doesn't say if the applicant is a town or business, it just said other. But it doesn't list the applicant name or the organization. So we don't even know who's requesting this. It doesn't give a contact person, it doesn't give a mailing address, a phone number, an email. And they're just asking $153,000.
Yeah, I spoke with the, one of the homeowners and I said, you really need to do this as a group. And I think it'd be a much stronger application if you came in and said, as a group, we'd be willing to put in 30 grand. The town would put in 30 grand and maybe the applications for 70 grand. But it obviously didn't come in that way. That's what I suggested. But yeah, so that's it. It comes in underwater infrastructure though, that's what it comes in under. And you're right, if we want to be technical about it, water infrastructure all over town. If you go down Chalker Beach, there's a lot of areas that don't have water that they would love public water because it would, trust me, it would increase the value of their homes significantly.
So I think it's more like that one, they'd have to go back to the drawing board because like they need to have like, who's the applicant? They don't break down the budget, they just say lump sum 153,000.
Right, right, right. But let me, let me just ask the, Carl, you question, because you probably are more in depth on the final rule than, than I am. One aspect or one issue in my mind about this is in the individual. I mean, this, this is, you know, Frank Bannon has come in and said he's, he's representing the, the other five homeowners on, on Maple Court. But my reading of the, of the final rule is that the money can't effectively, can't go to the individual. That it's got to, there's got to be kind of an entity. And whether or not that entity is the town to then do it, I mean, similar to what happened over in, what was it, Indian Town that you did?
Evan Slade.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I guess there's, in my mind, there's that question as well.
It would have to be, it would be a town project, you're correct. And, you know, I, I elected, basically, you're right. I mean, we could put in a lot of water infrastructure and I didn't think that putting forward a $153,000 project at this point for water infrastructure there was the right way to do it. I think these, it's a lot of money and they're probably going to need to gather together and if they really want it, contribute to it. And perhaps it can be a town project down the road.
So I'm in the ARPA Q and A. It says, the commitment to make investments in water sewer and broadband, allowing funding for improving access to clean drinking water, supporting vital wastewater and stormwater infrastructure and expanding affordable access to broadband. So granting access to a broad range of water sewer projects, including the EAP's Clean Water State Revolving Fund, the EAP's Drinking Water State Revolving Fund and certain additional projects, including a wide set of lead remediation, stormwater infrastructure and aid for private wells and septic units. So it does say aid for private wells and septic units. Doesn't say specifically bringing town water.
It is an allowable use. It's water infrastructure. I don't think there's any question about it. It's an allowable use. And, you know, it would probably be done, it's a town road that would have to be dug up. So yeah, the town is going to be a signatory on a contract with Connecticut Water. But the town did not propose the project.
Right. Neither did Connecticut Water. So maybe Connecticut Water like submit the application?
They won't do that. Connecticut Water, but it's not going to submit the application.
No, this would have to come, come through the town and then that becomes negotiation about how much the town puts in, how much the homeowner's put in, and then how much ARPA would put in to make, to make it work. Okay. Before we get into looking at each of these, any other comments that people have, general comments?
I, I think it might be who this, and I think we're all doing it anyway, is to develop a flow chart. Does it meet this criteria, this criteria, this criteria? If it's yes, let's keep going. If it's no, let's pass it out. And I, I'm not quite sure exactly what all those subsequent questions should be yet, but I think if we're all following the same logic.
So kind of a decision tree.
Exactly.
And if you make it all the way down to the far right, great.
Exactly.
If you don't.
Exactly.
Okay.
Because we're kind of talking about all of these individually, but on a highest level, we need to make sure that they meet the minimum criteria.
Right, right. I agree. I, one of the things that I will commit to doing, because I was, I was putting it together in my head as I was reading, reading through them, is whether it's a flow chart or a matrix. But, but effectively being able to take each one and, and say, does it check this box, does it check this box? And, and if there's boxes that aren't checked, we can talk about it as a group and say, oh, I think it is. Because I think we may have different opinions as to whether the box is checked, but that would be helpful. And then if you checked all the boxes, then that becomes an eligible.
And then maybe all that check, maybe even at that level, they need to be rated.
Right, right, right. Then there's a priority question.
Right. Somehow we need to go back to our four pillars to make sure that.
Right.
We are.
Are there more names? If you scroll down, we'll write.
What you see is what we have.
Okay. You see the bar, slide bar, we'll write and slide down. I do well for below that.
Well, there's, there's, there's six, seven and eight from Variety.
Right.
But that's it, right?
Variety, video, fire.
Just Brad and A. Okay. And the only other thing I would, I would add is similar to what we were saying about small businesses, I would say is also the case for not-for-profits. And that the, you know, we, we need to start with the question of is, was there harm due to the pandemic? And if there was harm due to pandemic, then is what is being asked for mitigate that harm? I mean, those, those are the two tests that come out of treasury. And so that's, those are the tests that I was applying as, as we're going through that. So Jennifer, being in charge of the computer there, do you want to just, should we just open up the American Legion? Because you, you want to see the applications over there?
Can I just, since we all reviewed them before, should we just like, can we just, well, just, do we all have, like, maybe have comments on each one as we're going through, maybe?
Right, that's, that's what I was, I was just, Brad asked for it to be opened up, so I just wanted to make sure we covered that. Okay, so let's start with American Legion. Total request was for 88,500, I think it is, 8,200. And we open the comments.
Well, we've had this discussion before where we wanted to know the gross versus the net of what they lost.
Right.
And I don't know if we were able to communicate that request back to them.
So Carl did reflect, did get back to them on that earlier on. And then they responded by sending their financial statements for 2019, 2020 and 2021. That was not, as I understand it, included in the application. But it is something, if, if the committee doesn't have them, we can get, we can get them out to the committee for some reason. I have them. And the, the net associated, their, their net profit or loss for 19 was a net profit of 3,169. Loss in 2020 of 1,274. So effectively a 43, 4400 dollar swing between the two. And then 21, they're back to 2,210 dollars. So now, what we hear, what we see in the application though, and what is not precisely clear to me when I look at the financial statements is that there were contributions made by a number of members to cover things like insurance and stuff like that. So to me, I think there's still, you know, I, my suggestion is that the committee go back and reiterate that the, the purpose of the funds is for looking at, you know, COVID-related impacts. So unfortunately, the projects that are listed are not necessarily projects which are to be funded. But we still don't fully understand the COVID-related financial impact to the American Legion.
I agree. Because it was my understanding that some members pulled out of their pockets, they fixed the heat in the anticipation that eventually they would be paid back. But like being that it is, it didn't come back as robust as we would hope. So I think we need to have a dialogue with them so that they can include that.
Okay.
And perhaps we need to express to them that if they're looking for funds, I'm guessing at a roof or at a new heating system, that they should apply, make that application separate.
Well, would we, would this group using the ARPA funds be entertaining that application? I don't want to invite them to make an application for something that we don't think will entertain.
Say.
I, I don't know. I'm, I'm opening the floor to further this, which I probably don't like. My, my theory was if, if they needed a new furnace, as an example, I'm thinking of what costs money, furnace. They wouldn't be able to rent out their hall and they wouldn't be able to do the good deeds that they do for their veterans if they don't have that capability. So in that sense, perhaps it would be viable if it were, if that were one of their applications.
Right, okay.
I, I think it's a lack of dialogue with them. They're not understanding.
Right, they're not understanding what we're looking for. We know what they're looking for, but we need to try to find the middle ground. Kristen?
Well, I was gonna say, didn't businesses and nonprofits get PPP loans, like for, like, lack of customers, lack of members, things like that? Didn't they get that?
Well, they, they were eligible if they applied and then there's kind of many applied but did not receive.
Because that money was meant for stuff like this versus the ARPA ones, I think. I don't know. I just.
Sorry, Kristen, the PPP loans are just for payroll.
It's for payroll.
Payroll, rent and utilities, and they were only for an eight to 12 week period.
Got it. Well, utilities, they have oil in here, you know what I mean? They have some things. I mean, this isn't COVID-related at all. I would say no to this one.
Right, or let's go back and find out, because there is some loss associated with their net financials. And let's find out what that, what that is.
And maybe they don't realize that the rental of their hall was truly COVID-related, right? So that really should factor into their losses.
That's what I'm thinking. I'm, I'm thinking they're not understanding that.
Right.
Just as a nonprofit in the business, if they were able to be open.
Right.
They lost that opportunity.
Right. Okay, other comments? Let's move on to then the next, which I have as being the fire department.
That's a lot of money for radios, portable radios. And Matt Kravitz has a, has a battery company. I wonder if he can help him with the replacement batteries?
Well.
Bruce jumped, no, no Bruce, you take the. So, so yes. Ah, radios. There is some, so the batteries are older, that's true. But there is some investigation into new town-wide system, both communications, both in radios. And I know the chief of police was looking into this with Motorola. And I'd have to check back with the chief to see if he's been any headway with Motorola. So there was some discussion, Kristen, this came to the Board of Finance, there was some discussion from a Board of Finance member saying, yeah, you can replace these batteries. The fire department says they took that suggestion, replaced some of the batteries and they failed immediately. And that some of the firefighters are very uncomfortable with the replacement batteries. Then I heard from a member of the Board of Finance, well, they didn't replace them with the better bat, they went with lower quality batteries. So there's a little bit of a, I feel like a little ping ponging going on here. And I think what I'm going to do, I was thinking about this recently, is just put everybody in a room. Just put everybody in a room, you know, Board of Finance member, chief of ambulance, fire, police. You know, and say, and by the way, the state, because the state has a radio system that we may eventually go on. And put everybody in a room and just say, what is the, you know, hash it out. That's what has to happen. Do we need to spend $500,000 on radios for the fire department or is there a better way for them? We haven't done that yet.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put this on hold until that, that kind of session happens and then we'll kind of re, review it at that point.
We're gonna need that session to happen soon later, correct? Because of the timing on this?
Well, again, the timing is, we don't need to, I mean, they, we have a, our first, I'll, I'll say it this way. Our first deadline is September 1. I fully believe based on what we've seen coming in, that there will be funding available after the September 1 deadline. And so in, I, I, my sense of it is we don't have to commit until 24 and spend until 20, end of 26. So there is time to get this right. And so it sounds to me that that's, that's the step that Carl needs to take is let's get it right and then let's figure out where the financing is going to be. and then let's figure out where the financing is gonna be.
Yeah, one other thing, they should have checked out for the provision of government services versus capital improvements in water, sewer, and broadband?
Okay. All right, first, church air purifiers.
I think it's directly related to the impact of COVID.
Right, and, and they, they did it in their application, so there isn't any, any additional need for any other information?
Yeah, they're using those going forward, right? Because we're still in need.
Okay, we don't need to spend time, we don't need to spend time.
How do we bring this forward then? Do we vote and say?
Well, what we said, what we said was, we wanted to see everything come in, you know, with that September 1 date, that's why we said, get everything in, then we'll put a package in front of the board of selection. So I would say this is, you know, clearly part of that package.
Can you ask a question? Is it, the, the money can be used to reimburse something from a year ago?
Yes, because it's the time of COVID.
Yep, yes.
Yep, just making sure.
Okay, Main Street crosswalks.
It can, yep.
Okay, done.
Hi there, I mean.
No, no.
Yeah, my, I'll start off simply by saying, I think it's a great idea. I think of what, you know, what you proposed, Carl, relative to the needs of the town around infrastructure, this made a lot of sense for use of these funds to be able to do that. And it's certainly going to enhance the downtown for all the businesses associated, which is one of the, one of the purposes here. So as far as I'm concerned, I think this, this is a, a one that we ought to put in the package as well.
I agree, it affects both community and economics.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think any time that you can see someone before they actually step on the crosswalk is.
Yeah, and the more people we can get walking on Main Street.
Exactly, and, and we gotta get across now. Kristen, did you, did you have a point?
No, I was just wondering, curious what the, what the level of current incidence is. Because they just said that, there was, there was a number of incidents where there's been issues, I didn't know the number.
Yep, uh, you know, nothing, nothing's happened particularly recently, but there were several people up at the Liberty Bank Crosswalk in particular. Several years ago, there were at least two or three incidents up there where people were hit in the crosswalk. Look, I walk it, we all, I'm sure we're all on Main Street quite a bit. I walk it frequently, and cars, you know, I, I hope this would help cars stop, it's a traffic calming tool also. But it's certainly for visibility. There were incidents in the past, I don't think there has been recently. Just so you know, I've gotten calls from parents who are just like, you know, and I know there's a cop there usually to help them cross, but the kids are forgetting all over the place. And the kids are a concern for a lot of parents, I've gotten calls from friends of mine whose kids, like my kid almost got hit the other day, and cars don't stop, we need better visibility. And certainly the flashing rectangular beacons will help that. I, I can't, I think I put it in here, we are looking at a fifth crosswalk, did I put that in there?
Yeah, it's in there.
Yeah, yeah, so we are looking at that, we're gonna propose it to the state, I don't know what they're going to say. And we would move the Sheffield Street, Sheffield Street Crosswalk northerly towards the Cartier Optical in that area. And then the next, that Kate Crosswalk would go in front of the Kate and cross there.
So we're bringing back the crosswalk that we took out years ago. But no, I agree with you, Carl, I mean, that exact instance, instance, actual accidents occurring that would cause bodily harm has been less, but the close calls, I would say, happened just recently at the sidewalk sale.
Yeah.
Just where the, where the Lions Club tent was, we observed at least three occasions on Friday. And we just stopped looking Saturday. And, and it's just a case of too much traffic, not being able to see the people step out, and, so I think this is a great idea.
Cool.
And this may be a little unrelated, Carl, but do you know if that will impact parking spots?
Yes, it will, certainly it will. If we do the crosswalk at the Kate and then move another one over towards the other side, towards Cartier, it has to, I don't see how it doesn't.
Right, I mean, that's what they do, the size of them, right? Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, there you go.
And you know, we have the medians, even, people are like, people don't see the people that are standing on that platform right now. You know, in the middle of the, when they're going across, you see so many times, people like just go by it.
I know at Hartford, they used to call it the aisles, right?
Yeah, well, that's why we need to have lights on that median too. Okay, Carl, great job, Maple Court. We've talked about it a little bit, does anybody have anything else that they want to mention about it?
I think we're going back to the town can submit an application for infrastructure?
That's what I would, I would suggest. And perhaps open up the door to have some kind of a program so that other members of the community should be, yeah.
Okay. Riverside Cemetery. This was 228,600 to redo all of their roadways within the cemetery.
Can I make a comment?
Sure, it's a town property, is that, it's, but it's, it's maintained by the, by the association, is that what's going on?
It, it's run by, so the Riverside Cemetery is on town property, that's the nature of it. Run by an association, a private association, quite frankly, we get asked for money from Riverside and from Cypress, they both need lots of paving. And they both, they both ask me for money every year. And my response is, are you willing to open your books and show me your revenues and what you have? And I have never seen them. That's number one. Number two, I, when I first heard this project, my question is, how is it related to COVID? How, how, how did COVID affect the Riverside Cemetery? Now, and I'm not being facetious when I say that.
I thought the same.
We were, we were thinking of the end product, I'm sorry, it's not funny. But I, I, I wonder if paving is necessary. I mean, it is not a highly traveled road with cars. And it is mostly used by walkers, who like to go and visit for a few minutes, or maybe a half an hour, come back. I'm wondering, maybe the cost of paving is, is more than what's necessary with our conservation commission. I mean, we're really looking for permeable surfaces, not non-permeable surfaces. So I have questions all the way around.
I would say, we should just move to the next one.
The roads, yeah, and, and just to kind of, the roads in both Cypress and Riverside are not good. They're, they're just in awful disrepair, but I'm, I'm not so sure this is in our application.
Correct, correct, all right, we'll move on.
Do we have to make a motion, do we have to make like a motion to not accept this one?
Um, no, I think not, not today. Today is really just kind of, I think, by going through this, we'll all have a better sense of where we, what, what we're looking for. And then we can do that when we, when we go back to it.
Okay.
Senior Pavilion, $80,000, this is the one we have had in social services, and we've heard about it a few times in the public comment. So. People's reaction.
Knowing that there's limited space within the senior housing there for a community room, they have a small one. This would open up the avenue for mental health by being able to share with families outside. Give them more possibilities of what to do right there in that facility.
Certainly speaks to the isolation that was caused by COVID.
Yeah. I, I think we should move forward with this, and just.
Okay, are there any, any other opinions about it, either Brad, Kristen?
I was on the fence with this one, because there's like, you know, we had positives, people, people speaking positively for it, people were against it. It seems like it's a little bit controversial.
Yeah.
Is it really COVID-related, you know, and people go outside during COVID, you know, many.
Not when you're 80 and 90, I think you need a place to go.
Yeah.
How many people can fit under 28 by 16?
Well, right now, Park and Rec puts 30 or 40 children in their hour.
Yeah, I think, I think the issue was more a matter of where people were able to visit with their families and that kind of stuff. So I don't think if this is designed to hold the entire population, but just be an outdoor meeting space with some cover associated with it that would, as Judy mentioned, would be able to assist in the isolation that we found out. I mean, part of the issue is, you find out a problem from COVID, and you come up with a solution to mitigate that problem. And to me, that's the way, that's the way this is COVID-related. Relative to the, you know, different opinions, I think we need to, as a committee, or somebody can suggest the town, I don't know who, but we ought to get something official from that group endorsing it, you know, saying, this is what we want. So that it's not, you know, we, it's not up to us to choose between this person or that person. But if the group is asking for it, then that's really what our responsibility is.
Doesn't the application include a letter from their board of directors?
Yeah.
Okay, if it did, then I didn't read far enough to get to that point.
Well, it says the applicant is, oh wait, oh yeah, it says the applicant is Sue Consoli versus, versus.
Okay, all right, all right, I didn't go far enough, okay, then that, then that really, from my perspective.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
Means the news. Okay, uh, then the other social services one. That's the one that's been kind of back and forth around food, not food, summer program. And what I would like to do, suggest, is we invite Heather and Sue in for the, maybe the meeting on the 13th. And just, and rather than go back and forth, Brad had mentioned this to me, and I think it's a good idea, rather than going back and forth, just having a, a discussion with them about what it is they're trying to do, if they want to revend the, the application they have. I would argue that some of the things that they're asking for are not necessarily directly COVID-related. But I think we ought to have that conversation and then take it from there.
I think also, we might include Shoreline Kitchen. Just because, I mean, I, I've seen about four different venues for my food, and can they maybe work together and, and what?
Well, I think some of the problem is, it's not so much that they're four different, but their timing of when you pick up the food. Because no one stops for a month at a time. And a lot of these people, you know, your refrigerator only holds so much food, so they have to go back again.
And when you have four different organizations doing the same thing, I think that could be consolidated down, where you can be open more frequently, or available more frequently. But I think four people are trying to accomplish the same thing, I think it needs to be looked at.
Right, but I think that, you know, that was one aspect of it. The rest of it was, there was the, you know, the funding for home repairs, to provide the internet essential classes, a contractor to help manage the caseload, their emergency housing, which I don't know whether they need anymore because of what happened with the feds.
Well, the other thing is Chaplin has a program for rents, they have a program for paying mortgages.
CHF, eh?
Yeah, it's a bay. So I mean, I, I'm not quite sure, and then the other thing is, I believe there was a moratorium.
Right.
On rents, and there's a moratorium on mortgages, and then there is an emergency fund available at all times through Chaplin.
Okay, so anyway, I think that's, that's the best way for us to handle that one. And then the last one that we all had a chance to review, because the Rotary didn't come in till about four o'clock this afternoon, is a variety video. And there is a variety, I guess I shouldn't say that that way, variety of things that they are asking for relative to business need. Only one of which I would be able to go and directly relate to COVID, which would, but I'm really not even sure about that SBA loan that they were talking about, because it, I'm not sure they took the SBA loan out because of COVID, but they're having trouble repaying it because of COVID, is what, what I'm reading in the application.
I'm, I'm making the assumption that they're referring to the Economic Injury Disaster Loan that the SBA had.
The IDA.
Which people took out, oftentimes not realizing it was a loan, and they thought that it was grant. But we, we saw plenty of businesses do that through Small Business Development Center. Because they didn't talk to anybody, they just kind of reacted, but I mean, I'm inferring that.
Right.
Based on work experience rather than the application.
Right, 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 yeah, they just referred to it as, as the SBA one.
And did they have an opportunity to get the PPP money?
Well, they would, they would have been an eligible business for that, but they, in their application, they say they did not apply for any of those.
Yeah.
But would that be an argument, I mean, even if they had applied and they were granted, if they are still in need now because it wasn't enough? I don't know, I mean, there are some questions here that we don't have the answers to. But to me, an SBA loan, if they have been harmed because their customers were, were gone, and now their customers are very slow in returning because of COVID. One would say, well, it is possible that that is COVID-related. Not having enough cash flow to get a decent computer to be able to do the new paperwork that state and federal are requiring. That could be COVID-related, I'm just putting myself into a really small business mindset, you're saying. There are some things here, there are others that I say, well, I'm sorry, but that's your business decision. Put up a new sign or don't put up a new sign, you have to figure that one out.
Right.
Alarm system, you have to figure that one out, that's part of your business, and it should be part of your business plan. But the fact that they don't have any cash flow because customers aren't coming in directly related to COVID, and now we're still in a recovery period and we haven't recovered, one could argue that that might be appropriate.
Okay, so your, your suggestion is, out of some of these applications, there, there may be a COVID relationship, but not out of all of them?
Yes, that is definitely how I would stand, there were some here that I don't think. I just think they should be going to the, the property owner.
Correct.
Yeah. I agree, everybody's thinking, these aren't COVID-related, you know?
I mean, to have a nice sidewalk, well, the town loves sidewalks, and I would love to have a sidewalk there, but just in front of that business, it wouldn't make sense, if you're broken up, you don't go further up and down.
Didn't we just put a sidewalk in front of there?
Is it in front of that, or did it stop just before that? Because it's just before Pond Road, isn't it?
Uh, there's a side, no, there's a new sidewalk in front of Variety.
Compared to, because we have a new sidewalk, that's beautiful.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah, and I think that's where the paving came from, and the signage and the flowers, yeah.
But to me, I, I think that's a landowner issue and not, not a COVID-related issue.
Right, right. Okay, so those are the applications that are in. What we are, we knew, we know from, we, we know we got another one just recently now. And then we also have, we've got a letter supporting an application we don't have from the Hope Partnership. We have got letters supporting them, so we know we've got some others that, that are coming in. We've got one week, what, one week and one day, so Thursday. So I guess the best thing to do is, has ever, did everybody ultimately have access to the Dropbox, so that worked out? I guess the best thing to do is, has every, did everybody ultimately have access to the Dropbox, so that worked out? Kristen, you had the Dropbox?
Yeah, I have a question though. Did we go over the Lions Club one?
Uh, we not only went over it, we have funded it, and, um, I believe it's going to town meeting.
Oh, that one's okay, because I, it was in here and I was in my notes, okay, but we did.
Yeah, well, this is just, this is just the complete package.
Yep.
It's, it's done.
Same, same with the SBA.
I have to be somewhere in ten minutes, so I have to drop, so sorry.
Okay, well, let me just, I just wanted to make sure that everybody is okay with the, uh, use of the Dropbox and being able to review.
Yes.
It's not worked that well, yeah.
Alright, and I will try to set up that matrix and get the matrix out, so when you do the review for the ones that come in over the next week, we can all kind of be working off the same matrix. And then, uh, we'll get together on the thirteenth and have a fun time.
Sounds good.
Yeah, variety, like, do they own or another DPA name or, or LLC or any flag?
When I looked up the, from the assessor's office, it said Madison P and G Properties LLC from Madison. So I'm, I'm assuming someone owns that property, but may, may not be.
Oh, you think they're renting? Is that, is that?
Who knows? I, I, it's, none of that showed up in the application.
Yeah.
Kristen, thank you. And, any, not yet, any comment from the other, uh, comments from the Harvard community members?
So, I, I'm not a community member, sorry, but. Just because a lot of people call me, um, you don't want any clarification to go out to people at this time, it's just an internal discussion. But at some point, are we gonna want to have a mechanism for conveying certain things to people about, you know?
I think it would be, you know, what you heard tonight, at least what I'm hoping you hear and anybody who watches the video here is, is that the funding is designed to be able to, um, assist problems directly related to COVID, or related to COVID. And that what people are look, should be looking for is, based on those problems, how are those problems getting mitigated with that fund? And so if they can tie the request into pandemic and how, you know, this is, is helping based on the problems associated with the pandemic. Uh, that's the clarity that I would feel very comfortable you, you providing.
Yeah, okay. Um, but some people, it looks like there's specific things you're gonna want from them, but we'll hold off on that for now.
Um, you and I can get back together and look at these notes and see who's, who's gonna send the notes on, on the ones that we reviewed tonight, who's gonna send notes to those ones. Okay?
There are variety lights, um. I mean, I just kind of like, it's a shame that they didn't apply for PPP. And, and I'm not quite sure where, um, the liability, I mean, it's like, the opportunity was there, I mean, you know, two lenders told me that they approved ninety-five percent of the applications.
Is that enough preview?
Let's hear from us, let's hear, let's hear.
I had the same thought, Brad, and I went and I just double-checked SBA parameters. So, based on what variety videos, businesses, they are potentially excluded because they're sexually curiant, um, where they derive the majority of their revenues from. So. Stores like that would be excluded from being able to apply for any of the SBA products.
It would be excluded?
Yeah.
So, would they be excluded from this fund?
This, I don't believe that that's outlined in ARPA. But in terms of the SBA, like the SBA wouldn't do a strip club or a, a video store like Variety Video, so.
But.
So that they couldn't do PPP or EIDL based on that. So that would be, that was my question, like, how did they get that, based on what their mo, their business model is? But ARPA, I don't think has those same restrictions.
Yeah, I am probably ARPA before.
Right, right, absolutely. That's why we're having these conversations, just so we know. Okay, any other points? Then I'm going to take a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? I'm in favor, please say aye. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the board of select in the meeting.
Yep, second.
All in favor?
Aye, thank you all.